E nine one one.
It's on the, it's on the agenda. Yeah.
Hello Lori, how are you today? All right. Good, how are you sir? Uh, I think the last time we were here, uh, there was some talk about, or we were asked what the average, for the telephone bill, the average amount. Uh, Lori did some check in and she found out that it's a dollar seven is the average statewide of, of that.
Surcharge.
Surcharge.
And we're currently at seventy.
And we're currently at seventy.
Seventy five.
Seventy five, yeah.
Seventy six. Seventy?
Seventy, yeah seventy.
We're at the lowest.
Lowest team. Other than that, what's going on is, uh, we're in the process, or we have our end of everything ready for the state to move all of their equipment out of the old justice building over our way.
When I talked to the gentleman, um, one of the requests that he had was, uh, I think they've got on tap, on slated to do a new system. And so they were hoping to be able to have that done by the end of the year, the end of the calendar year. So, I mean, it's not like they're ready to go today. I'm not sure what their timeframe is for their.
It's just move their, yeah, move their radio equipment from the justice building into, to the, we have a little building that chief is allowing them to move into.
So they still had equipment in the, in the justice building?
It's, it's there and it's working now. And I think what, instead of moving what's there as they're slating for the upgrade, just to put the new stuff in the new building and then disconnect and take the old stuff out.
So they were a little concerned that, that they do need the electricity left on in that building for a while, so I.
And it still has been.
Yeah.
The bridge, so when, when does the bridge shut down?
Well, the bridge stops their, um, homeless part at the end of April, but then they, then they continue running the, um, day labor service out of it. Instead of two different locations, um, it's run out of the same place. They just don't have overnight stay after April thirtieth, so.
Uh, other than that, uh, Lori has put together a, um, uh, kind of a, um.
It's just a real rough estimate of, so of our, our expected expenses as gage to the, um, what we're bringing in on the nine one one fund. And we're, uh, you guys know from our last meeting that we would be, if we stay at seventy cents, we're gonna be significantly below the, um, amount of money we need. And so.
Can we put, put together kind of a replacement?
Oh, kind of let you. And, and this is based off of just going back to the county website and looking at the, um, the previous actual expenditures for that fund.
And we also.
And then with some estimates.
We also have the, uh, uh, replacement of a replacement plan. I'm looking at replacements.
For, for upgrading the dispatch you were talking about?
Well, for the radio consoles and the new recording system, which are, need to happen right now. And then, um, it, you know, I'll, I'll hang on to that phone system as long as I can, but they, they were telling me when they sold it that because it's computerized, it may need to be replaced in five years. Well, five years is this fall, but I think we can, I think we can spread that out several, several more years. So what I did on these estimates was I took the, the current surcharge and, and based on the amount of money we were getting in, two thousand sixteen, which was the two thousand eight, two hundred eight thousand four hundred and fourteen, divided that by seventy and then multiplied it by a dollar or a dollar thirty. That's how I came up with the, the access, the change in the access fee from twenty nineteen forward. If you look at the estimates on the spreadsheets. So the first page is if we just stay at seventy cents. The second page shows if we go up to a dollar, looking, starting like, like I said, in twenty nineteen, it would increase, increase the, um, access fee by eighty five thousand each year.
From two hundred to two hundred and eighty-five?
Yeah, and if you look at the, if you went all the way up to a dollar thirty, it would increase it by a hundred and seventy-one thousand each year. Which would then come a whole lot closer to covering the radios.
We've also been looking into two ways to, uh, for grants to help us with that cost. So there's no way that this fund is gonna keep up with.
Is gonna keep up. But then, then if your equipment, you know, if the, if the usage of the entities that use the dispatch system are out, are not, if your fees for what you charge them for that dispatching service are, are not keeping up with your costs of maintaining your equipment, your operations, does that mean that those entities need to be paying more? I mean, because basically you're going back to a capital reserve. This, to me, looks like a reserve fund.
And that's kind of what I think they've always planned for this nine one one access fee to B is a capital reserve. So that when you have to replace the radios or we have to.
So something's not keeping up though, if you're, if you're.
Yeah.
So, so why, why, have, have you increased the rates, the fees that you charge the hospital and the police department and fire departments and all that?
So they pay for personnel and, and the benefits. And so it has increased slightly from year to year.
We pay for this. That, that money that's paid to us for that pays for the operation in the center. It doesn't, doesn't pay for equipment. It just pays for the operation in the center. And it has always been the way. It's been the same fee, um, same base fee since ninety-six.
And part of, um, there is a portion of that that is paid out of the E nine one one. There is an operation of.
Is it a hundred?
That's, I think that's, that's one fifty-five. I know it's at least a thirty-five thousand. There's two bills and I don't know why it's split. One's a thirty-five thousand dollar bill and the other.
Part of this is also GIS, that one fifty-five. It's GIS.
I think that's this down here, the general fund right there. That's the piece of it. So, um, I think the one fifty-five is what, um, E nine one pays towards, um, operations of that.
Could be. I, I, so there's two, there's two different times we went back to the fund to get operations money. I don't remember exactly how much it was. It was two different times that you did that.
So when I first came, that first year, we had bought some, something for some reason.
That was three.
Phone system, wasn't it?
The phone system.
Okay, three fifty-five or something like that.
Phone system.
Yep. And that was.
That was in fourteen.
It was installed in October twenty thirteen, so it's been almost five years.
How could your operation costs not go up, um, like with wage increases?
It, it goes up. The base fee stays, I can say, but the more you use the system, the higher your bill gets and that pays for it.
So this, but this one hundred fifty-five thousand that's coming out of that E nine one one every year goes to what?
To that.
Operation. So, so we have not only the fees from the entities that use it, but you're also using all that capital fund?
Right.
So we're using some of that for operations now. So, okay, so.
So what you're saying is if, you know, if we eliminated that, then each user could pick up, would have to pick up.
Well, if, if that was designed to be a capital expenditure fund, then I, I mean, I know that only because I know in our budget, we're doing the same dead gum thing. And I don't like it. It makes me uncomfortable when you're subsidizing your operations out of your capital, capital reserves. There's gonna come a
And we do have a piece.
It's coming a day when things don't add up.
We do have a piece of our GIS salaries and benefits that we take out of the E nine one one. We used to have the, half of the addressing position, but we don't have an addressing position anymore. Um, GIS has taken over, um, doing that addressing portion. So that's why, um, GIS has been shifted into that.
We just wanna kinda let you know.
Yeah, I think.
What we're, what we're at and what we're doing.
I see, I see, I see the dilemma.
We're trying, we're trying to get to, uh, there's a couple of grants out there. Lori's been looking at a grant for, with, uh, FIRE.
We, we can, uh, look at the AFG grant. That'll be next spring again, I think. Does it, does it come out twice a year or just once, once a year? So that would be next year. And then, um, we did talk to the, the Nidola representative that's in Orono, and he said certainly that the, the radio consoles would be, um.
Subject to, to fit into a DOLA grant.
DOLA grant, yeah. He said that that happens.
I think by all means, cause that's exactly how it's set, that is severance money. And I think every time you get a chance to get some of that severance money back here.
Right.
You should.
So, that, that's the direction we're headed now to see how much we can get in grants and see where we're at after that.
And then, you know, the chief, again, he always offers in, if we decide that we need to go up to that dollar, um, surcharge, I think he, I'll, I'll volunteer him. He does the legwork.
I'd be glad to do it. It's not, it's, it's, it's a long-term thing, but it's not a lot of work, if you understand what I'm saying. I mean, I, I just have to make a lot of meetings. And I don't mind doing that. I'd be glad to do that. It's grand design. That's what you're gonna do. I don't want to do that no.
And I do know, I mean, we've had, um, conversations and people do call here, I'm gonna say three or four, maybe five times a year, asking, is the sur- sur- surcharge still seventy cents, you know?
We get the same call.
Because we get, I mean, these checks come in and, and the regulation says that they have to submit this monthly. So we get checks for two dollars and thirty cents and, you know, because they only, may only have three, three people on that system. So they've collected, you know, the two dollars and thirty cents. But that's what the regulation states is that monthly you have to turn that in. So the amount of checks that go into the E nine one one are, I mean, a bunch. But like I said, you know.
Some of them are pretty small.
You know, that seventy cents or that whatever, it could be as low as seventy cents. But they regularly are submitting those, so.
So there's a lot of, uh, computer systems out there now that people are using their computers as phones. And they have to, they charge that surcharge on those computers, that, that setup. So, um, and then I'll be having a meeting next week with, um, Montrose County. They're coming down to our center. We're looking at, um, trying to get text to nine one one, cause there's so many areas. And it's a big push by the state right now.
Where you can text and you can't call.
Right. There's so many areas where you can get a text out, but you can't call. So, um, we're gonna try to get that implemented sometime this year before the end of the year.
Well, let's just, uh, deal with AT&T then.
I, I don't know what you're referring to.
What the man will do, put them in the, put them in the system or.
You're talking about the first net?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, ag- again, and I think we talked a little bit about that at the last time we were here. That first net is, um, it's, it's gonna go to the front range first. They were talking about creating, AT&T said that they were gonna, um, install, I think it's thirty-five. Trevor, do you have the number thirty-five? I think it's thirty-five, um, new cellphone towers across the state. And when we were on the phone, um, or actually it was in a meeting, I asked, well, how many of those are in the southwest region? The five, five counties, two tribes, zero. They're not putting any, any down here. So, so essentially it's not gonna, I don't feel like first net's gonna help us. Yeah. It's, it'll be.
Is that because our population is not?
We're the people. It's gonna be one of the people.
Once again.
Once, once again, I think we're in New Mexico.
There are days I wish we were. Other days I wish we were.
I know it's a hard number to come up with, but do you have, could you give me an educated guess of what an average call cost to the entities that are using the system?
And, and there again, it depends on the entity because, um, it's, we char- we ch- we don't charge by a call. We charge by percentage of use. So, um, and I'm gonna use Pleasant View because they're the ones, a, a call for Pleasant View probably costs two hundred dollars, maybe even more than that. Cause they have sixteen thirty-two. I wanna say Pleasant View has sixty-four calls a year roughly. And they have to pay for one percent because that's the lowest buy-in. So one percent of the, of the, um, operations. And one percent is roughly, is it eight hundred thousand, eight hundred and fifty thousand-ish? So they probably pay eight thousand dollars for sixty-four calls.
Yeah, they, I think their, their bill issue was sixty-seven hundred dollars for Pleasant View.
But because of that base fee.
What that gets them though is twenty-four hour coverage. They may not have a call for a month, but they have twenty-four hour night coverage in case, in case the call happens.
It's kinda like a fire hydrant. It may sit there for fifty years and never be used, but when you need to have it, it's gotta be there.
And needs to be functioning.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's how that works out.
And then the sheriff's office and IRs go way down because I have, I have the biggest use and Steve has second.
And, and as far as the, the two big agencies, which is the sheriffs and, and the PD, it depends on their staffing. Like if, if they're short-staffed and, and can't do a lot of proactive police work, traffic stops and stuff because they're on other calls, then, then their calls go down. But when they're at full staff, it's, it costs.
So it costs you more money to be at full staff, so. Make sure you're not at full, no, no.
Is this payment, uh, schedule, is it common throughout Colorado? Or is it different? I mean, is there, can you describe different?
You know, there is, uh, there is the cost per call. And I can't, I haven't checked on what, what different places charge for cost per, per call. State Patrol is one that would, in Montrose, I believe they cover Yuray County and they charge them per call. And I, I couldn't, honestly, I couldn't tell you what that is right now.
But a lot of your calls go out to multi-agencies as well. The hospital, the fire department, they all respond to. So is that considered one call?
Yeah.
It, and, and they, so, so it's one call and they each, if there's three agents, they each pay thirty percent of that call, of that one call. But we don't charge by call.
My call, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, if you have a bad accident, that's one call. We don't charge for every time they ask for a, you know, it's, it's a call.
Or even the fire, um, the big fires, that's one, one call for sure. Maybe it's three agencies or four agencies, but it's still just one call.
And that's just tracked by, through your system at the end of month of what kinda says, this is who responded to what we had.
Right.
And here's a hundred percent and you use twenty percent, use fifty percent, you use.
Right. Right. We do that quarterly, do, um, calls for services. I turn in a report to the chief and to the, the different agencies.
Would it be possible for us to get copies of those for the last, um, year or so?
Sure.
And just, uh.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Is that okay with you?
Sure, oh yeah, you bet.
Do you feel like as far as our technology, uh, we're compatible with, with the rest of the state?
I feel, feel like what, once we get these radios updated, we will be right in there. Um, when, when we first came into service back in ninety-seven, we were, we were the fir- we were the most up-to-date and style and place in the state, but.
And then this, was that when the state patrol was here as well?
No, they, that's just last, that's when we established this center out here is when they decided to do their regional dispatch centers. They do, uh, I think they got four or five in the state and they do regional.
That was in ninety-seven or?
Yeah, ninety-six, I think. Ninety-six or ninety-seven.
Nineteen ninety-seven.
Was it ninety-seven, yeah.
Do you have any problems? Like, uh, the commissioners had a wreck over in Canejos County and we made the time for the nine one call.
He damn near killed us all.
Me first.
Saved their life, by the way. Um, and then paid back. But, uh, uh, the call went to somewhere on the east slope.
Yeah. Oh yeah, they were try- oh yeah, they were trying to dispatch somebody that went, went way out around Pueblo or somewhere. I think it was in Pueblo where they got.
They couldn't find our, we were on highway.
We were outside of Antonino, heading up the Coonbrace Pass at the bottom of Coonbrace and, uh.
What, uh, what happened?
Kind of problem?
We, we do kind of, um, so it's, if you're calling from a cellphone, it's whatever cell pa- tower you hit. And it goes to the closest, um, nine one one center. So we get a lot of calls for, um, down around Tismas Pass, Arizona. And, um, a lot of calls from Utah that we have to transfer those calls back to the correct agency. And, and you know, it gets to be a little confusing because we have Highway forty-one, which was, is from Highway one sixty to Anna. And then we have one forty-one, which was.
Out through Egnor.
Egnor, and then one forty. And we get calls from all those highways and, and sometimes the dispatchers are a little, and we got two red masons.
A lot of, uh, nine one one calls up to Montrose too for state patrol.
Yeah.
So I just have something on that, so they call you, you're self-transferring it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And the dispatcher stays on the line just to make sure it connects.
You know, the worst part about that is I never read the mile markers. So I haven't, I have no idea. It's between so-and-so's house and so-and-so's house when it's familiar, but, but that's the hard part is, I mean, we as consumers, you know, I don't read those mile markers. I, I don't think any of us pay attention to that.
And so a lot of people, a lot of people think that we get the addresses automatically when they call nine one one. And if you're calling from a house phone, we would. But your cellphones, um, they have to be phase, we have to get them as what they call phase one. And if, if we get them as phase two, it, we can't tell your location. But if they come in as phase one, it, it pinpoints your location somewhat. But it only has to be accurate within something like three hundred meters sixty percent of the time. And that's sixty percent of the time, it covers the, the entire United States. So where they have more cellphone towers, they can get it a hundred percent of the time. And down here, they can be wrong twenty, or.
Thirty, forty percent.
Eighty percent of the time and be wrong.
What's the difference between a phase one, phase two?
Um, just the, just the location information. That's the.
It has nothing to do with the device that you have?
No, no, it has to do with the, the cellphone companies and the cellphone towers. And how many towers you're hitting, exactly.
They can talk to Google. They know exactly.
And what you're talking about all the time. They don't taste book well. So are you gonna schedule us another?
Yeah, when?
Somewhere down the road.
And if you hear anything from the state on timing, I do have the gentleman's, I can't think of his name, but his contact, you know, is too far when they.
Yeah, it's probably Tom, Tom Phillips.
Yes, that's the one. Yeah. That, when they think they'll have their.
He's been coming in and talking to us. We've got, uh, I think they're gonna move the, uh, microwave first on the radios.
But you're showing us Lori, that next year we need a seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollar capital expense for new equipment.
Yeah, for those radios.
Figure out how we're gonna get there right now. And that's why we're looking at grants now, so.
That's why we're here.
And I know that obviously.
How much, how much are you gonna ask for the grant?
For the grant?
Do you know what their capacity is?
I think when we were here last time, we talked about the, um, administrative grant and there's a, a limit to how much money that is.
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand. So I mean, if we go with that one, or we could go with the, just the regular DOLA, which is, I think.
Million or two.
Yeah. And, I mean, if I could get it all, that would help us out.
You know, you know Lori, I, if I were you, if you're, if you're looking at DOLA, I would, I would go for the, the whole deal because this whole system, this whole, everything we're doing here is tied to Kinder Morgan's fields and the, I mean, there's, there's a certain connection there that, that should put you.
And what are those, are they fifty-fifty matching?
Yeah, that's their preference. I mean, their preference is a fifty-fifty match.
And, and I don't mind doing up the grant and.
Maybe we do the administrative one and a fifty-fifty.
I'd like to see us give more of those severance monies back here. And that's about the only way we've got to do it.
Yeah, we'll.
They pay it out of here, so I'd like to see us grab, grab it back when we can.
Yeah, hav- having a, uh, up-to-date nine one one center is pretty important to this county.
Yes, it is.
So.
Everybody involved in it.
Event. And so.
Everybody involved in it.
If we could save ten lives, you know, having it.
Save one life.
Yeah. So. We, we will keep plugging along and see if we can get something going.
I think, um, obviously today is the deadline for DOLA. I think August, and I think August first is the next one.
And that would be, that would be good. I think if we could plan for, for twenty nineteen to.
To get your equipment in.
I checked with Motorola and the price they gave me, although it was for quarter one of twenty sixteen, I think he said, oh, I can get you the same price.
Are you gonna have a grant ready then for August?
If you want me to, I'll.
I, I, you know, I really would Lori. I think that'd be a good.
Do you want me to write it through you guys or through the city?
If we're E nine one, uh, it doesn't make me a doer.
Whatever you think the best shot is.
Okay.
Yeah, well, it gives us the most, best advantage of getting it.
And if it's a co-agency, the other side of it is, is DOLA may look at it better from, um, cooperative with the city, county.
And you've got thirteen agencies using the system.
From fire departments to everything, yeah.
But I'm looking at August one and things like that. However, we think it's the best, you know, with the city manager situation and things like that. Whatever that puts the best foot forward, whichever direction.
It doesn't matter to me at all. I don't care.
It doesn't. Patrick Rondinelli.
Patrick, I'll talk to him and see if he.
If he has, if he thinks.
What he thinks will be our best.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you guys.
And you'll just, you'll email me next meeting time? Okay, thanks.
Thank you guys.
We'll try. I know he's got one bull by him for sure. Yeah, I sit right here.
Paul, I guess you're next.
Yes, sir. Morning gentlemen.
Morning Paul. How are you, man?
I'm doing good.
You're heading south, no? Think you, think you can get that southern accent back on in time to.
You know, come on down and, uh, some of the other things are gonna.
You gonna be down in the low country?
Yeah, down in Piedmont, about the central part of the state.
Was it North Carolina?
Yes, sir. Sweet tea, biscuits and gravy.
Sorry to lose you, but I hope it's a good move for you. Hope it's a.
Uh, mother's getting older, needs help, only surviving child, so that's the primary purpose of the move. The, the job opportunity is good as well.
With the VA?
Uh, yes, sir. But being, uh, within an hour of the folks and, you know, assist them is the important part.
I understand that.
I've got the report that I sent to you. Um, just a, a couple notables. All of our jurisdictions within the county now has EOPs and or resolutions and ordinances for emergency declarations. Uh, that's some bragging rights. I don't know of many other counties. It, it's a credit to, to, you know, the city and Lori took care of theirs. You know, I had very, very little input on that one. But some assistance, but we have a both towns and a county there. That, I, I don't know of any other counties in the region that has that. So that's definitely, uh, kudos to everybody that's worked on that. Um, the town of Dolores, uh, presented a draft of them, met with their town board. But now they have a new town manager and he's reviewed that and I met with him. And he would like to make some more, uh, changes, a little bit more teeth in his authority if there's an emergency and, and you don't have someone from the board available. So they're gonna, uh, continue to work that. Um, the, uh, ID credentialing system is really full swing now. Uh, three of the five fire departments are on, all law enforcement's on. Uh, the town of Makers has adopted it and. Uh, the town of Makus has adopted it and implemented, all of the city of Cortez has implemented it, so that, uh, program's really moving along. Uh, to transition, I, uh, worked with Jim from IT and, and specifically Glenn, he's gonna take over the printer for the, this period of time for making the IDs. Uh, and then be the point of contact for outside agencies as well to get those made. And then on, uh, grant, it's been ordered, we should receive it sometime soon, it's called the Rapid Tax System. It's a different piece of the salamander, uh, process, but basically you can scan a driver's license and print out a different color ID for whatever you need. We're getting five thousand cards, five different colors, a thousand each, so if we had a evacuees, they can go to a certain point, scan a driver's license, type in how many people from the house, the animals' names, those type of things. And then they'll get a credential, when we do re-entry, uh, then they already have a credential to show the, the deputy. If they're using the app, they can actually track who's in and who's out, utilities, volunteers, those type of things, they just go check in. And, and on the backside, if you're looking for reimbursement, those type of things, uh, safety issues, you can track the man-hours and all of those type of things on the backside. So the, the, the system has a lot of capability, and they used it for the evacuees in the Leitner Creek in La Plata, and it went over very, very well. Instead of us trying to identify, you know, we're looking to let residents in to prevent looting, that, that type of thing, you, you actually have something, the deputies at the roadblocks who realize man, they can see. Uh, so that should be coming in any time now, and then Glenn's gonna take that piece until the new EM is hired and then transfer that equipment to them, because it's important. And if we needed additional systems and we're the only emergency in town, then we have two other systems, one in Archuleta and one in La Plata, that can be done on as well.
Where do they go in that particular case with Leitner to get that credential?
Trevor, can you answer that one? Where, what was the evacuation site where we checked there?
Yeah, we, um, we had the, uh, the shelters where we set up the, the credentialing piece, so then the evacuees would then check in to prove residency, and then they were issued their card, and then so when, when the evacuation was lifted, um, there was no line at the checkpoint because everyone had already been vetted and credentialed to have access into the area that they belonged to be in, so that, and that's how we, um, basically streamlined that re-entry process.
And, and it's a very portable system, uh, the sheriff's office alone, a couple of firewise communities is looking, and, uh, the fire departments is looking at doing an evac drill, they scheduled it for May, but I think they're gonna back it off a little bit, just to, with time constraints. But, uh, for the communities, they were gonna set up the evacuation site to check in at the college. So based on where the fire is and, uh, the sheriff and where the emergency manager would designate a place that people could go to, that would be more convenient than having to go to one specific place, no matter where the event was in the county. Um, the JIS agreement, set the draft, John, I don't know if you had a chance to review all of it, uh, the joint information systems agreement, uh, I don't know, eighteen months ago, we brought down a group that worked with all the PIOs and a lot of agencies to come up with a joint information system agreement. This is the draft, ready to go to the lawyers to have their chop on it, there's a lot of, uh, should language in there, not shall language. Uh, so that i- it's not as binding somebody's punitive, it's more an effort for everybody to work together for the public information piece. And then once that's agreed upon between all the agencies, then the PIOs will work on an actual PIO plan that has more of the, the functional piece of it. As far as everybody working together. Uh, the EOC training is still on schedule, I'll send out a reminder to everybody, just because I'm leaving, I don't want that, that progress to stop. Um, and that's scheduled for May tenth and eleventh, uh, for the, uh, class, and then, just started, uh, the sec- we'll have a second meeting here soon before I leave. And then I think the undersheriff's gonna sort of lead that till a new EM is brought in. An active shooter full-scale exercise, and it's scheduled for August two thousand and nineteen. There's a lot of planning, a lot of training, and the idea is, when we do the exercise, is all the agencies in the county, we've had a lot of training, but not everybody's participated in that training between fire and all. So that we have one protocol that all the firefighters know, all the law enforcement knows, so that it, no matter where it's at in the county, they can respond under those same procedures. So working with the schools, uh, maybe having one joint unification, reunification site for all the schools to go to, uh, and then forming teams for the reun- reunification piece. And then just backing up the training and working it together so that the full-scale exercise really tests what folks want to test.
Would that be when schools in session, will students be involved?
No, students will not be involved, and we don't want anyone under the age of eighteen because it'll be realistic, as far as the mulage and the makeup and those type of things, uh, for the scenario. But the Makas Schools has offered it to the teachers, it'll be during, probably during their workdays before school, uh, to the teachers that want to participate.
I'm just wondering how you would do that, so you have students, I mean, volunteer to be a student or something to, to know what to do with that.
We want, uh, role players, maybe from the college, the Yatrics or something of that nature, or volunteers to come in and be the role players of the students, but we don't wanna expose them to that kind of.
I was just trying to kind of get bodies, for whatever reason, so that instead of, well, the bodies were gonna be here, the logistics of how do you really get eighteen extra people to where they need to go, how you actually get them out, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, there'll be actual people representing students, they just won't be students.
Right.
And then the, the teachers, when you put somebody under that kind of stress, uh, there's actually been events where you had an exercise and teachers quit. Just from the exercise, because of what they see and hear, if you're making it a realistic exercise. So it was put out to the teachers, those who want to participate, but it would not be made.
We do those kind of things all the time with fire department, you said, uh, lives or?
Something, yeah, that have enough to be, to carry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so that's the things on the, the, the schedule, and then I sent you, uh, the email on Friday, there's been concern over a part-time position. Um, and I sent you a letter from DFPC, and I know Trevor's here today, and we have some other folks who, who have concerns. I'm leaving and I'm very proud of the program we built. And I don't think a part-time emergency manager can continue to give the same service. Uh, the way I have always looked at it is I work for you gentlemen since we've made that transition, but also felt like I work for the fire chiefs, I work for the schools, I work for everybody involved. And by not being, uh, domineering or trying to tell them what to do, but having the approach of working for them, uh, I, I think that's how we've got the program where it's at. I don't know that a part-time position can continue to give that service, and I think the program's either gonna backslide, or, or it's gonna be hard to maintain the progress. But, uh, with a part-time position, it will probably backslide. And with the investment and the time of so many people, and even financially, uh, if you think about the budget and, uh, the grant money and all the things that's came in over the past five, six years, I, I think you'll be losing money, uh, versus gaining money. I think the program has really blossomed, people understand the role of emergency management, uh, and how it gets us all to play together. And it's really the only position in the county that focuses strictly on emergency management, and by saying that, people planning, training, exercising and working together. And, and I think it's made dividends in the, the, um, emergencies or disasters with the wildfires and stuff that we've had.
So the, the state pays half, is that correct?
Correct.
Right.
And then you've went on some paid, uh, missions.
Mm-hmm.
Do you know what those totals have added up to, compared to what, what your salary is, because you had mentioned about, you know, we would be losing money.
State pays half the salary, not half the budget, right?
Half the budget. The entire.
Because of his, the salary benefits and then whatever his operations are, I mean, fuel and vehicle and, and that kind of thing.
It's a, it's a fifty percent match. Now, I don't know that an accident emergency manager would become part of this instant management team and have those deployments, I did that extra. I think, uh, understanding really the instant management role and also the emergency management role really enable me to, to understand both sides and make those things meld together. Oh, a- and learning from other people's mistakes, the things that we've brought back was, was huge. I don't know that that other person that is gonna take their place would be doing that and, uh, save the county, you know, a week here or two weeks there salary. So I wouldn't include that in the budget, uh, but if you look at, basically the budget's eighty-one, eighty-two thousand a year-ish, I don't think I've ever spent a full budget. So you're looking at an investment from the county as forty, forty-one thousand, but it doesn't just support you gentlemen and the county government. It's supporting the towns, it's supporting law enforcement, it's supporting fire, uh, they don't have the people to put the exercises, attend a lot of the meetings to do that. So when your emergency manager can pick up their slack, um, a- and not slacken, they don't wanna do it, they just don't got the, the personnel or time. And be able to go speak on their behalf, uh, get the grants, organize the training, organize the exercising, I think the money comes back, uh, just in the training we've had here that people haven't had to go for, it's been brought here two months in the county, uh, the dividends and, and the payback is huge.
Mr. Hut kind of puts it succinctly at the end of his letter that, uh, if we don't do a full-time person, that it can cost in reimbursement and ca- and the cost share process, so.
I think the relationships we've built, uh, will take the stage in fire, because Patrick Seekins and all the partners, uh, between the fire chief, emergency management, the county, et cetera, was their own scene. Uh, the cost that maybe some other jurisdictions that didn't work so well could have incurred, we didn't. And, and I really, I, I think part of that is the, the folks that's in place, but it's those relationships that was built prior. And the cooperation and understanding that was there. Uh, other jurisdictions may have cost the county significantly more because of the acreage that was private versus.
Public land.
You know, I, I almost equated, uh, I u- used to be a safety employee and you can never tell how many events you prevented. So you couldn't always quantify the amount of money you saved. But I, I, I think if you look at the program and look at the support, um, and the partnerships and everything that's going place, you, you, you can almost theoretically quantify the programs working and, and the investment has truly worked the investment. And if you look at ten hours off the, the budget, you really don't save that much because every dollar you save for the county, you really only save fifty cent because of state. So you lose fifty cent coming in as well.
Yeah, really, we had tried for part-time, it's easier to take part-time than full-time, it is full-time, back it off, part-time.
Yes, sir, I, I just don't think that you're gonna get someone, if you look at the, the job descriptions, I, I don't believe you're gonna get someone to apply for a part-time position that meets most, you know, a good portion of that experience. And as I told Larry Don, when he called me, I don't want you to hire somebody like me. And that's the first day in the office, I was taking the ICS one hundred, the very basic class for emergency management, and it took two years to really get an understanding. And then moving under the commissioners out from, uh, the sheriff's office, then I was allowed to take that training and education and really start working with all the partners, but just not the first responders. So getting someone that has a, a good portion of the training at least, to come in and pick it up where it's at, you'll see just a little bit of a hiccup and then they can carry the ball because it's set up that way. If you hire someone who has less than that training experience, you're gonna lose hugely on the investment that you've made. Because they're gonna have to back up, learn, and then start trying to build those relationships and move forward. And if you, I, I just, I don't see anybody doing it part-time with the same enthusiasm. And as I said in the letter, if you're working part-time, typically people's gotta make a living, so they've got another job or something else they're doing. Then that competes with this program and the focus they need to being able to do nighttime, weekend, um, I never tried to say no to any of our partners. If they needed assistance, okay, when do you need me there, what time, and, and made myself available, and I think that's part of this success, got the next EM, we'll need to continue on. All right, I do wanna say publicly, thank you, gentlemen, uh, for your huge support. Um, I have greatly, uh, learned and grown from this position, and I think the, uh, the community's better prepared for anything that comes our way. There, there's still some work to do, uh, quite a bit, actually, uh, but I'm comfortable with the program is, and I do appreciate all of your support and Melissa's support throughout my tenure.
And I just say that, as I told you on the phone, that if you ever need a recommendation, you could give me one, like, you'd get a good job.
Yeah, you've been very good for our county, Paul.
Thank you, Jim.
Very good. Good luck, good luck down there.
Thanks, sir.
Don't let the chiggers get you.
Oh, we're not in Chiggerland, that's more eastern. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Kicks Texas barbecue.
When is his last day?
End of April.
Uh, officially, my last day is April thirtieth.
April, that's right, huh?
But my wife has me going to Europe between now and then, so I have about eight working days left.
Eight days left.
But you'll be back before you leave.
Yes, I'm, I'll be back, uh, the week of the twenty-third, it'll be my final.
Probably, I think you're back in a little bit.
Okay, I won't shake everybody's hand again, but this is Megan Bradley.
Good morning, Megan.
John.
Nice to meet you.
Okay, so we are just here to, um, get signatures for our tobacco contract, our tobacco education program. And Megan is our coordinator, and. Since August, yeah, okay, it hasn't been a, a year yet, but she's awesome. And, uh, what this is for is for a year, and it starts July, um, runs July through June, like most of our other state contracts do with CDPE. And it is for thirty-eight thousand dollars for her to do our tobacco education program, prevention program.
Can you explain what we're on about the program?
Yeah, um, right now, I have three goals that I'm working under, um, one is with the schools, um, prevention for youth. One is, the second one is, um, eighteen to twenty-four-year-old straight-to-work population, and for that, we've been partnering with the local college, SUC. And they just passed their, um, one-hundred percent tobacco free policy, always first, so we've been supporting them and looking at any revisions that need to be made there. And then, um, the third goal has to do with secondhand smoke, so I partnered with Montolory's Early Childhood Council to provide secondhand smoke, um, education for the parents of, of the centers there. That's, that's currently, and then moving into this next fiscal year, um, they're changing things up a little bit, so the first six months, they'll be doing a community assessment. Part of it will be data collection, and then part of it will be one-on-one interviews, um, to determine where the greatest need is in our county. And then from that, we'll develop an, an implementation plan to focus on a specific one.
And this program's been in place for about?
Yeah, we can't give you the exact year when we started this, but it's been, yeah, because Julie, uh, well, we had Doris, if you remember Doris before Megan, and we had Julie before that. So we've had several coordinators, um, we, I would say at least ten, twelve, maybe fourteen years, I can't say exactly, we've been doing it for a while.
Does, does your program, your cessation, I, I assume you're after cessation of tobacco products and stuff, does that include the vaping and stuff that's going on now that, where it's not really tobacco, it's just nicotine delivery systems?
Yeah, so a lot of the education that I'm trying to do and will be doing in the future has to do with vaping. Um, we're actually having an event at the Sunflower Theater on May ninth, um, so I have some experts speaking about that. Um, because of our statistics are showing that, um, at least half of high school kids have tried vaping.
Really?
And then they have found that, um, if kids vape, then they're four times more likely to smoke cigarettes a year later. So it's kind of an initiation drug, so that's probably the most concerning piece right now, at least con- or concerning youth, so, um.
Is chewing tobacco on the decrease?
Not here.
Not here.
Seventeen point one percent, which is more than double the state average.
Really?
What about, uh, regular tobacco?
Smoking.
Cigarettes sort of right around the state average, about thirteen, fourteen percent.
So this assessment, it would be, just to confirm those numbers again?
So they have some new data coming out, um, it's not been released yet as far as the, the healthy kids survey from twenty-seventeen, so it'll be kind of a compilation of all the newest figures. And then, yeah, try to meet with, like, schools, multi-housing, different, different folks around the community as far as what the needs are.
And you run that department yourself?
You're doing? You doing anything else, or is that your sole?
Right now, that's my sole job, um, starting next year.
You don't cross trainer and day train Bobby?
We, we have that in the agenda. We are.
I figured you were.
Yep.
Well, I would then make a motion to approve the task order contract waiver number one fifty-four with the, uh, Colorado Department of Public Health and our Monizuma County Health Department for, is that all you have to have, contract waiver one fifty-four? For the year two thousand eighteen and nineteen?
The move and second to approve task order contract waiver number one fifty-four. For Monizuma County for the two thousand eighteen, nineteen year.
Aye.
I have my little sticky notes and then the arrow pointing to where you need the sign.
Intrepid plus.
It's almost as hard to move a fire in the east side, right?
Looks like it's pretty rough on you.
There's a long story behind that.
There always is. With you, there always is.
That's a burn.
That's a burn from fire?
No.
Oh, you rolled something and got on your head?
No, but that sounds like a better story. I have water pump that, um, quit because of the oil, it can get too much of an angle and I was trying to lift it up and ran and wet me. I was trying to lift it up to put brace something on it.
You love it.
It was, it was so wet, I slipped down and hurt my upper.
And down, you lit on that and?
You, you didn't stay on it very long, for sure.
No, I very, I was pretty quick to respond. Anyway, I don't have to go, I have cancer to go.
No kidding, your skin cancer's cleared up, you know what Brandon times come, you know what them calves feel like now?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice meeting you, ma'am.
I'll see you all this afternoon.
Thank you.
We have an added, please, from Leanne. The van and James left. James is.
You want, you want Leanne?
Us left, okay. No, I'm here. Um, so we had a little hiccup, um, in a process. Uh, if you recall last year when we did the single development for Empire Electric where they were gonna put their, um, road twenty-nine, where they were gonna put their, well, where they still are.
Solar field or solar farm?
Still planning on it, yes.
Oh, they are, I thought they backed up on that.
I, I put the public notice in there, but I didn't put.
Yeah, out there on Totten Lake Road.
Right across from Totten Lake Road. So, um, it came to my attention that the flat, the original flat, um, was recorded, but.
Nobody signed it?
You didn't sign it.
Well, how did that get recorded?
They can record, you can record a coloring.
You can record anything, huh?
Yeah. Well, no, what I did is, um, no, this is.
The original.
We wouldn't hold the original from, um, the assessor's office. Um, Empire Electric is actually over there right now paying for the recording fees to rerecord it. Um, so if I could ask you for your.
We need your signature.
Signatures, yes.
Not for extra cords today.
I got you, you got your wire, your wire, that good.
I'm direct connected.
You're direct connected.
And Kim also?
Yes, sir.
Do you want me to date it as of today?
Oh, this is never happened to me. I'm not sure, what do we do?
I did it as of today.
That's fine, I, yeah. Thank you, gentlemen, and ladies.
Here, man, you will.
You're, you're up next, James.
Okay, John, um, let's see, the first thing, I, I just wanted to, uh, get a little information from the commissioners and sort of see where we're feeling, uh, about that road up at Sage Inn. We've got a meeting coming up on the fourth and we're gonna discuss, um, you know, what, what the situation is looking like up there. I mean, last week, you know, I explained that we had, had some, some violations. Um, I think our, our law enforcement's on top of it, uh, but it is a re- lingering concern up there. Um, and I just wanted to bring this to the commissioners because, uh, the A N S team, I think, is, is kind of split on this. Um, the Forest Service seems like they would like to either have the gate open or closed. Um, you know, we've got the option of opening it and closing it, for example, the Backcountry Horsemen are coming in for their poker run. Um, so they'll, they'll work with Backcountry Horsemen, um, on that. Um, but then I think after that, the Forest Service would like to either have it open or closed. Bureau of Rec, um, they're saying, oh, we'd like to have it closed because, uh, protecting the water is our top priority. So, I mean, we've got some competing interests there. And I'm hoping that at, at the end of this meeting, we'll have some sort of a consensus on whether to keep it open or closed so I can bring that back to the commissioners.
Some where the rock's too small, I mean, make them move a rock and then put it back, was it, was it too small?
That, that's part of it, Larry Don, is it too small. Um, the other part of it is, is, you know, you can slide, you can slide a pretty big rock, you know, it is on, on the ground if you have a blade or something. Um, so countersinking it, um, is, I think, a good move on the Forest Service's part, that'll, that'll hold them in place.
Which they are doing that, right?
They are doing that, yeah. And honestly, I, you know, I, I need to get up there and kind of take a look at where we're at with everything because I haven't been up there since last fall. My understanding though is I think we've got everything plugged up relatively well. And, you know, it is gonna, there's always gonna be places where people are gonna be able to get in. It's gonna be a matter of kind of tracking those places down and plugging the holes to some extent. But we hope we don't get any, uh, you know, any bit slides through and infects that lake in the meantime.
Who is try, who is moving rocks to get in, did they ever, did they know what they were trying to move through those rocks when they were moving them?
I don't think we have, have any knowledge about what that is, you know. But you can clearly see when a rock has been slid aside and slid back, and there's.
They're wanting to get something down there on the shoreline.
Yeah, yeah. We're probably not gonna stop A T Vs on the Sherrill shoreline, and I don't think the county wants to stop that.
They don't carry, as long as they don't carry the muscles and the cargo muscles, they don't care what's on.
Sure, they're not the water, water problem, you know, the Forest Service can kind of deal with that if they don't like it.
Yeah.
But it doesn't look like that's causing a lot of trouble. I think the main thing is just gonna be those jet skis. And, uh, we already had, you know, again, we had a few boats that have been launched and, and have been contacted and, and I believe there's already been a citation.
Yeah, over there by the cemetery, and then they went, went around and went to another place and, yeah.
And apparently they're, they're, um, they're taking aluminum boats down the rocks off of Great Cut Dyke. And, uh, they can launch them there and then they just winch them back up, you know, those aluminum hulls, they'll just bounce over those rocks like a pier can, it just. You, you just beat, beat it back into shape, you know, I mean, and that's the wonderful thing about aluminum hull, you know, but, um, but it does provide opportunity for them to kind of skirt the law. Um, anyway, I just wanted to bring that to the commissioners to see if you had any sense about whether or not, from what you're hearing from community members, whether or not we'd feel like we wanna make a decision at this point.
At that meeting, they're, they're having down at, uh, D W C D with that, uh, the Division of Parks and Wildlife guy. The eleventh, February eleventh this week, yeah. Will enlighten me on how we proceed with that. But I, I'll tell you, I think we've got, we've got to protect that water at all times, and I, no, we're not closing that lake where people cannot get into it. We've got House Creek and they've got the McPhee Ramp and.
I think it's important perspective too because.
If we get those things, we, they are there, they are, it's a forever deal right now.
It sure is.
How far is the gate from the Sage Inn Trail that the back of your person and the bicycles use?
I'm gonna say it's maybe, uh, you roughly in the order of maybe a half mile, something like that, maybe not quite that far.
From where they go in?
From where they go in.
Sage's there.
And that's the other thing, there are some other o- options up there, I mean, there's parking right up there at that intersection, you know, where all those rocks are piled. Um, yeah, yeah, you'd have to ride a little farther, but I think there are other options there. And, and Kenny, you made a really good point, I mean, there are other options to that lake in terms of, of access, if you wanna take a kayak down or whatever. Um, there are ways to get there, um, maybe not the most convenient way. Um, and then the other thing is, is all these other lakes that have had all the motorized shutdown, um, are, are really seem to benefit, um, in terms of non-motorized. People are loving that, so they'll, they'll take paddle, paddle boards out and where they don't have to compete with the motor anyway, so. In some ways, maybe, uh, maybe the situation is sort of resolving itself, um, you know, just giving a little time, letting people readjust where they, they prefer to use things. Um, so maybe, maybe it is good just kind of, kind of wait and see, sort of, because that has certainly been one of the, uh, the approaches that, that we've been hearing, especially from D W C D, because they're trying to keep, they're trying to split the difference, trying to keep recreational access while protecting the water. And, you know, that's a good position to take.
Where's the goal, yeah.
Absolutely, so. But I want to let you know that it's coming up and we may have more discussion about it, so.
What's Kenny talking about, is it been sent to us on our agenda?
Yeah, with, uh, Ken Curtis sent, uh, Ken Curtis sent me an email, uh, last, last week sometime. Did you not get one, though?
I don't, I don't really recall it.
I'll send it to you.
Was it on an Outlook calendar?
Came in on Friday.
Oh, was it on the calendar?
I don't remember if it was on the calendar or.
It's a, it's still put destination grill, right?
That's correct, yes.
But maybe he's.
I thought it was on Wednesday at seven o'clock.
Eleven, seven P M, that's right, yeah, yeah, same one, Cortez Conference Center.
Yeah.
Ken Curtis, public meeting.
Now, I will clarify, I mentioned I have a meeting coming up on Wednesday, and that is the A N S Technical Team meeting. So, so that will just be, you know, the, the key stakeholders trying to figure out what we can, can take back to the public.
Did, do you want me to, did you forward it to who?
I'll do that, right?
I got it, I have it.
It's on my calendar.
Okay. Okay, um, so I guess that covers that, and there'll be more information coming on that one. Um, the other one was the, uh, the B L M M O U, and I was contacted by the B L M and they're just asking us how we felt about that M O U again. You know, and I think, you know, we, we, and I've sent it to John again, I think, um, I don't know that we had anything we were concerned about within that M O U. Um, but this is something we could probably, if I could just shoot an email back to the B L M and tell them, hey, we'll just address this when you come in for your meeting.
There you go, tell them we'll have an answer when they're here.
Uh, so it'll be the, um.
No, nineteen sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen? Yeah, I guess it would be sixteen.
The third. Week.
Do you, uh, know where they stand on the appeal through the Phil's rule?
I don't know where the B L M stands on that appeal, I guess we've, um, submitted ours, so, yeah.
But did they, did the, you said they have thirty days to respond with the complaint?
Um, so, they had thirty days to file more information, uh, about what their complaint was. And I feel like thirty days might be over, so maybe they've already filed everything that they're gonna file. I mean, they did, they didn't just file a kind of a bare-bones thing, they, they put in that long narrative about what your complaints were. So maybe they're done and that's it, that's, that's what's in. But, uh, I just got concerned, I didn't want us to come in any deadlines, we wouldn't have ours. Um, I think I've related it too. So, uh, I don't know what the next step is, we, uh, wait to see if this thing gets separated or, or they ask for briefs or argument or what. Not real familiar with the process.
I'm not sure, I'll, I'll ask Connie about that, it just doesn't sound like they're real familiar, Connie's never gone through this before either, so. Could be, uh, could be new for a lot of them. Um, okay, and I did want to ask, uh, the commissioners and John, um, you know, regarding the two-four-seven-seven, uh, claims for the Rico West Dolores. Um, have I, have we got everything that you needed, John?
Besides like which roads we're gonna do?
Yeah, yeah, and, and so I think that's kind of where, where it sort of seems like what we're down to is deciding which ones. Um, I, I think I, um, I shot you kind of a resolution, a couple of other counties have used resolutions. So I tweaked one of those resolutions so that sort of fit what we were after, because both of them were pretty similar, they use a lot of the same language. Um, so that would be one way to go about it, and I guess maybe another way would just be to send a, a simple letter. So.
Do both?
Yeah, probably do both, yeah. The resolution seems like it's got a lot of power to it, um.
And I think, didn't Dolores County, when we had lunch with Dolores County, didn't they, didn't they kind of allow us to, speak for them and the trails in Dolores County? For the ones that, that were on that map that were qualified for RS two-four-seven-sevens?
That could be, I didn't, I didn't attend that though, so I didn't, and that was kind of a question for the commissioners, how that meeting.
Let's do it, I don't know what kind of legal authority we have to do it, but let's assert it anyway.
Yeah, I think they were, I think they were okay with that.
Boy, it sure seems like they would be okay with it, um, on, on, given the trails that we're talking about.
Right, right, they're right in the heart of their county.
And after looking at the Rico West Dolores map, I think maybe me and John need to sit down and, and look it over, um, maybe come up with a list of recommendations, um, because it does have a lot of, uh, roads and trails on those maps. A lot of them are, are up in Dolores County. Um, and so if we wanna look at the, the entire Rico West Dolores landscape, or do we wanna kind of look at, you know, kind of Bear Creek, some of the ones we've heard about? And I guess that's sort of a question that, we don't ne- necessarily need to answer it right now, you know, just think about it. And as we, we come forward, um, you know, we can add to the list or we can drop them off.
Maybe we should review it, run it by someone relevant to the.
Sure, yeah, make sure they're all in agreement, yeah. So we did get a very good, uh, you know, encouraging, uh, email from, uh, San Juan Trail batteries, and they seemed to be very supportive, so. Okay, I guess that concludes, uh, everything I had, uh, for today. I can't think anything else.
How's the flume going?
Flume's going pretty good, uh, you know, they're, they're continuing to move through all the, uh, um, all the repairs on that. You know, most of it's interior work right now, where they've, they've got it at the shop.
Right, they're just moving, moving along.
Moving along fine on that, so. Uh, for the trail project, we'll be meeting with the, uh, um, with the stakeholders here, um, probably within a week or two to kind of, we, we want some direction on whether to move forward with the, uh, the pathway that goes along the trail or along the roadway, or whether we wanna keep focusing on something that goes out a little farther. And we're kind of getting to the point where we're wrapping up that P E L, so we're gonna have to make a decision on which, um, uh, you know, which section to move forward with on getting our design work and everything done on it. So, uh, you know, we, we feel like the one from Cortez to the Fairgrounds is the obvious, I mean, it's got the highest value, but there are certainly some issues there. And, uh, you know, we can discuss whether or not we wanna leapfrog to the second section and work on some of those issues, or we wanna say, well, you know, we've just done what we can do in the first section and we're gonna have to run along the road, so.
Is there just one property still that is?
That's the main property that's a problem. Now, I did want to let the commissioners know, I did talk with, uh, we, we had a meeting, um, with, the, the property is right adjacent to it. Um, it's, it's, uh, Burns Land and Cattle, um, you know, owned by, uh, several people as well. But we met with them, they seem to be, um, certainly willing to continue to talk with us. And we mentioned the, the, uh, the whole notion about the, uh, the three-mile transportation plan and their property would be at, at the, the upper end of where Seventh Street could continue on through. Boy, they're very interested in that. Um, so I, I, it kind of tells me that perhaps, um, that, that parcel where we're having problems, if they, you know, see that we've got a transportation plan online and incoming, um, that could potentially change the dynamic there too. So I'm gonna try to get together with the city and we'll just see if we can get a meeting and, and, uh, and just try to push the city to, to get moving on that. I mean, I think we know what we want from a transportation plan, I mean, we haven't evaluated the entire plan, you know, obviously it's just the east side of Cortez we've been looking intently at. Be a good time to kind of, I mean, get, get moving on that, so, we'll, we'll try to stimulate the city on that, so. We've got a new, uh, um, you know, new leadership kind of coming on board with the city, so we'll be, uh, you know, work with Shane on trying to make sure that whoever they, they hire kind of knows where we're at with everything and, and gets up to speed right away, so. We've got a new, uh, um, you know, new leadership kind of coming on board with the cities, we'll be, uh, you know, work with Shane on trying to make sure that whoever they, they hire kind of knows where we're at with everything and, and hits up to speed right away, so...
Anybody saying they do, we talked about, uh, meeting with the new Dolores City Council whenever they get formed.
Uh-huh.
To try and work out something, you know, get a trailer or not, or something there.
Okay, yeah, and no, nobody has, has, uh, talked to me about that, but I think it's a great idea and we probably, you know, we need, and I've done that with Mankas already with their new manager, went and did an update and everything, so... But yeah, it's a really good, good suggestion, we should do that. No, they haven't replaced Heather yet, to the best of my knowledge, um, and I know Heather's just an interim, but I did try to get her up to speed as best we could. Yeah, she's good, yeah. So, yeah, thank you, James, we'll, uh, you know, I guess I can work with, um, whoever we need to work with to kind of coordinate on that.
We talked about it here, about the commissioners, we went to town board. Kind of got to work out something.
Because who was told there was a trail that had been laid out up that, up that, up that gully out?
I'd like to meet the, the new city or Cortez Board as well, my name.
Probably wouldn't hurt, you know, we should have a, have a summit.
Board to board.
And perhaps we need to do the same thing with Mankas, I don't know if you can kill, kill all those birds with one stone, but, you know... But it would be kind of good to kind of get everybody together to be talking about things, I think we've got so many things that overlap. And of course, you know, I'm aware a lot of the recreation stuff, you know, I mean, but, uh, but I'm sure there's a lot of other things where, where we've got some, some good discussion to be had. Okay, gentlemen, I guess, um...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, James, uh, yeah, let me know if you, you want me to work on that or I'll work with Melissa, however that...
Where are the elections, John?
Ah, coming up, what? Council, when, when's the city elections, James? Tomorrow, tomorrow, Tuesday tomorrow.
Do they have, come to your office to do the co, the voting or the, they do it, they can do it?
Mail in.
It was all mail ballot and then they return them back to the individual city clerks, but we're doing all the tabulation.
So you're working tomorrow night?
I am.
Send them a bill, send them a bill.
They paying you to do that?
Absolutely.
Not a girl.
Is there anything else anybody had?
Do you want to do public comment?
Sorry about that. Is there any public comment?
Are we doing Board of Health over there?
Board of Health will be in, at the Health Department. Um, you go to the front desk and they'll take you to where, to their, um...
Wardroom, that little wardroom they have in the bathroom.
It's, it's a process to get there. No, they'll do the recordings.
You only want me to do them?
Do you want a, a jerk, so you can adjourn to lunch, if you...
Yeah, we're, the, the adjourn for lunch stands.
Yeah, still, still in place.
Who gave you a second?
Actually, he... Aye.
Aye.
So there's always the director's connect.
We'll probably have time to come back here, but...
Is there going lunch with us today? No, super.
Is it really?
Yes, it is. Well...
Oh, that hurts.
Yeah, sure, Lambert might last at the youth, what is it? Yeah, L S, L S.
Yeah, it's that big long one and then this goes because the, a lot of the newer devices only have this.
Could you guys spare a quick question?
I doubt it.
Uh, do you guys want to say anything about the Social Services Director resigning? I just wanted to give you that up.
I didn't want anybody... Uh, sorry.
That's okay, I just...
You know, did you have any specific questions?
Well, uh, my one specific was, was he put on administrative leave before?
He was.
Okay.
And, and so, yeah, I mean, I think I can answer that.
Okay.
Um, he was, he was, and it was really just an administration legal decision, I think more than a commissioner thing that put on...